Okay, it's 5:30. Let's go ahead and get started here. Is the online setup open and operating? Okay. Welcome to the May 23rd, 2023 City of Grand Junction Planning Commission Meeting. Couple of housekeeping items. Agendas are available at the back of the auditorium if you need one. And please turn off or silence your cellphone. And hold on, let me just check and make sure if I'm following my own advice. I am, okay. Okay. In order to promote a civil discussion and honor the right to differing opinions, members of the audience are asked to refrain from exhibiting expressions of support or opposition such as cheering, booing, yelling out, et cetera, at any point in the meeting. Please note, members of the public as well as applicants may be joining us via the web this evening. We ask for your patience as we utilize this hybrid system that helps ensure that all that want to participate in this hearing are able. In addition, for all items scheduled for a public hearing this evening, a public hearing has also been conducted online at GJSpeaks.org, where information pertaining to the applicant's request as well as presentations are available. The comments received via GJ Speaks are reviewed in advance by the Planning Commission and are included as part of the public testimony of each corresponding item this evening. The reviewing the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial in nature and meet all requirements of the codes and regulations and/or the applicant has acknowledged agreement with the recommended conditions. The consent agenda will be act upon in one motion unless the applicant, a member of the public, a planning commissioner, or staff request that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda will be reviewed as part of the regular agenda. Consent agenda items must be removed from the consent agenda for a full hearing to be eligible for appeal or rehearing. Is there a request from the commission to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anybody in the public or online that would like to ask the commission to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Public hearings are conducted pursuant to the laws of the State of Colorado, City of Grand Junction, and the regulations duly adopted by the Planning Commission of the city. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information and testimony by all interested parties to enable this planning commission to make appropriate findings and reach the conclusions required to be made by law. Both a written and video recording are made of these proceedings. Those who desire to be heard must identify themselves by their full name. The order of this hearing will be as follows. An examination of the application and a determination concerning the adequacy of notification. A presentation, description, and analysis of the application by staff. An opportunity for the applicant to present evidence and argument concerning the applicant's position. All other interested parties may address the commission. Public comment will be limited to three minutes for each speaker. And I will just warn you, that goes fast and we do enforce that. The Planning Commission may ask questions of the staff. The applicant or members of the public after each presentation. Public comment section of the hearing may be closed after all public comment has been received. The applicant will then be given an opportunity to respond or rebut if desired. Staff may also respond to any statement made by the applicant, the public, or commission. The chair will close the public hearing and no further evidence will then be accepted. The evidentiary portion may be reopened only by a majority vote. After the closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will begin its deliberation, which will end with the passage of a motion. The first item on the agenda is to consider a request by Brian R. and Stephanie Bray to zone 2.714 acres from County RSF4, which is residential, single-family, rural, to R4, which is residential, four units per acre, located at 880 26 and 1/2 Road. Is the applicant here?
Yes, Tracy States with River City Consultants representing the applicant.
Thank you. Are you ready to proceed?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And staff, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, I am.
Before we begin presentations, was there required public notice given?
Yes.
And has the requisite notice been completed pursuant to the city's noticing requirements?
Yes, as indicated in the staff report, notice has been provided according to the code.
Okay, with that, we can proceed. Could you please introduce the exhibits for the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The first exhibit would be the staff report dated today, May 23rd, 2023, which includes several attachments. The second exhibit would be the Grand Junction Speaks comments that were made available to the commission to review. And the third exhibit would be the presentation also tonight dated May 23rd of 2023.
Thank you. And are there any additional exhibits that you'd like to add to the record that were not included in the staff report?
No, there are none.
Thank you. With that, you may proceed with your presentation.
Right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. I'm Krista Nashback with Principal Planner with the Community Development Department. As you stated before you, tonight is the zoning for the Mustang Ridge 1, 2, and 3 annexation. The applicants, Brian R. and Stephanie Bray, have requested annexation of a 2.714 acre must known area known as the Mustang Ridge 1, 2, and 3 serial annexation into the City of Grand Junction. The existing county zoning, as you stated, is RSFR, and the applicants are proposing a city zone district of R4. The annexation is outlined here in the striped area and hatched in purple, and it's located at 880 26 and 1/2 Road. The existing city limits are shown in the pink color around Located here on the aerial photograph, the annexation area consists of just one parcel that presently has a single-family home and an outbuilding on the front part of the parcel where it faces 26 and 1/2 Road. This is the comprehensive planned land use map for the area. The annexation area has a land use designation of residential low, which allows residential use in the range of 2 to 5.5 dwelling units per acre. It's located within Tier 1 of the intensification and growth tier map of the comprehensive plan. The proposed zone district of R4 is consistent with the residential low 2 to 5.5 dwelling units per acre per the comprehensive plan. The surrounding county zoning is generally RSFR. That is rural and only allows for a density of one dwelling unit per five acres. The area is urbanizing, and as such, the city's comprehensive plan includes this area as Tier 1, as previously mentioned. Properties in the vicinity already within and developing in the city have zonings of R2 and R4. In addition to the R4 zoning requested by the petitioners, there are two other zone districts that could be applied to implement the residential low, one being the residential five units per acre or the community services and recreation or CSR zone district. This is a photograph looking at the property towards the southeast, and you can see the existing residence and the outbuilding. There's approximately one acre of vacant land on the parcel behind these structures or on the east side of these structures. As with any zone of annexation, it's necessary to review the criteria and provide an analysis as to whether the proposed zone district conforms to the zoning and development code requirements. The criteria for review is set forth in the zoning and development code and states that the city may rezone property if the proposed changes are consistent with the vision, goals, and policies of our comprehensive plan, and they must meet one or more of the rezone criteria listed here. City staff has found that four of the five rezone criterion have been met. And in summary, after reviewing the Mustang Ridge 1, 2, and 3 zone of annexation requests from County RSFR to City R4, the findings of facts listed here have been made, and staff recommends approval of the request. That concludes my presentation, and I will entertain any questions the commission may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Nashback. That was an excellent presentation. Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
No, I don't have a formal presentation prepared. We concur with staff's findings. I'm really just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from the commissioners?
I just have a quick one for clarification. The staff report and the staff's presentation indicated it was 2.7 acres, and there's other information from the city that indicates it's two acres. Has a survey been done, and is it in fact 2.7?
It's a little over two acres. By the time we dedicate area for the flag lot, each lot that we're proposing after the annexation is approved is right at one acre in size.
Okay, so it's closer to, excuse me, it's closer to two than two and a half from a potential density.
Yes.
And the Mustang Ridge 1, 2, and 3 annexation is part of a serial annexation due to annexing the roads up through, is that correct?
Correct.
Great, thanks.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? I have one. I went out there today to look at the project, and there's a for sale sign and a flyer on the house that's there, a one-acre house. And then there's also the notification of the application for developing. So I'm a little confused as to what is getting developed there, the entire two acres or just the one acre behind the house?
The one acre behind the house.
Okay, and it...
It's just a single lot for right now.
It's just a single lot for right now.
Sewer is not available right there, so it has to be at least one acre in size to accommodate Mesa County septic regulations.
So, I'm sorry, maybe I'm slow, but I'm not quite understanding it. So, the reason for that is Mesa County regulations regarding...
Regarding septic. It has to be at least one acre in size.
But to be in the city, does it have to have sewer?
No. They first have to get the, to be able to record the plat with the new lot, they will need to get approval from the 201, the Persigo combined city-county, I don't know what we call them, a group, before, to get a waiver so they don't have to hook up to sewer at this time to be able to just build one more unit. So they're finalizing those, that agreement with the city and the county to be able to do one more unit without having sewer. If it were to develop further, yes, the city will require that it be connected to sewer.
And if they build further, it would be under R4?
Yes.
But they can split it and just put a single house there?
Yes, if they're able to successfully get the sewer waiver at this time.
So then they would have two houses on two acres?
They would have, the proposal is to split the two acres in half and have the existing home on one, and it has an existing septic system. And then the one behind, you know, would be a new unit that the proposal is to also have that one be on septic at this
I guess my point of confusion is that doesn't sound like R4.
Not yet. It does not, but...
But isn't that what we're being asked to do is to approve it for R4?
Yes. That's really under the, under the comprehensive plan. That's the lowest density that the city can apply to this parcel and allow them to do the subdivision. But they have to show in the lot configuration they're proposing in the subdivision that it can be further developed in the future if someone desired to do that.
Okay, I think I understand. Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, I have a follow-up on that. So is it being annexed, are they requesting annexation in this city in order to develop? Do they have to be annexed in the city to, in order to build even the second unit on it?
Yes, to subdivide it and build the second unit. They do. The county would not allow them to do that with the RSFR zoning.
Got it. I'm clear.
And from a criteria standpoint, if we're zoning to R4, the zone that we would be approving, you could get sewer and infrastructure there in the same manner that other subdivisions do where they can extend it through. It is possible. So we're not approving an annexation or a zone that couldn't be developed. It may end up being that this particular property owner just chooses not to develop at a density that would require such services be extended. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah. I mean, I think you can see on our maps, there are some other larger parcels out there that are in the same land use category, and if they choose to, would develop and probably be a similar density applied to it. So at that time, when it's more cost-effective, if there's more development around there, yeah, it could be developed to the R4. Is that answer sort of, okay?
Yep.
I might point out that just directly to the west, on the other side of 26 and 1/2 Road, is not within the 201 sewer boundary. So they're just right on the edge, but the comp plan does still show it as Tier 1 development potential.
Just one last question. Is there a minimum development requirement, minimum density for R4?
2.5, I believe. Two, oh, just two, that's right. Two.
Two units to the acre?
Two units per acre.
So the minimum density on this two-acre site would be four?
Yes.
Let me pause here and ask, I mean, what we're looking at right now is annexation. We're not looking at what the development or potential could be in the future. So if we need to pump the brakes on what could be there and just look at, we're looking for annexation, you could extend sewer and utilities and infrastructure in order to develop at whatever minimum development standards our current code shows. Do you feel comfortable, whatever that case may be, that the approvals could be done and get to those minimums for this R4 zone?
Eventually, yes. They can.
Okay. The developments will be interesting, but the annexation certainly seems to fit the criteria when we just focus on that annexation itself. I'm good.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff at this time? Would the applicant like to make some additional comments?
Yeah, if I can. And this is Kevin Bray, not Brian Bray, but I am representing him on this project as well. I just wanted to clarify, and I know it sounds confusing sitting in the audience. So what, this is a rezone, and it's an annexation, and it's because it's within the 201 boundary. So nothing can be done on the property. No development can occur on the property unless it's annexed. So the reason for annexation is not because the county wouldn't allow it. It's because it's, the county and the city have an agreement that it has to be annexed in order to develop. It's not being developed under a major subdivision process. It's being, the proposal for the subdivision is what's called a simple subdivision. And trust me, it's not the right word because it's never simple. But it is just for one lot, and there is a process to divide a property one time. And that's the process that they're going through concurrently with the annexation. Obviously, that process cannot complete unless the property's annexed, because there's no jurisdiction. The county doesn't have jurisdiction on this property. So a preliminary waiver was granted by the, by the Persigo. And so tonight, what they're asking for is just for the annexation and for a zoning designation. And their intention is to move forward with the lot split, which is a simple subdivision, not a, not a major subdivision. If they were to do a major subdivision, that's where those minimums come in. But they do, there is a provision in the code that allows people to split their property one time without going through a major subdivision. So I hope that clears it up, and I just wanted to clarify that, just so there wasn't confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all appreciate that explanation. Are there any other questions for staff or applicant at this time? Okay, well, thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing up to public comment. Please direct your questions to the commission, not to the applicant or the staff. If testimony is duplicative or repetitious of what has already been presented, please note in your comments agreement or disagreement with preceding testimony. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please note the Planning Commission may not directly respond to questions that you may pose, but they have heard your questions and may choose after public comment to ask the applicant or staff to address specific questions. Is there anybody from the public that's here in person tonight that would like to provide comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody online?
None at this time.
Okay, we have no comments. I assume the applicant doesn't need to make any further responses. And with that, one last chance for the commission. Does anybody have any further questions for applicant and staff at this time? Okay, well, and then we'll close the public hearing on this matter and turn to the Planning Commission for additional discussion, deliberation, and/or a motion. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make, or in the absence of that?
Hearing none, I'll introduce a motion.
Be my guest.
Mr. Chairman, on the zone of annexation request for the property located at 880 26 and 1/2 Road, City File Number ANX 202381, I move that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to City Council with the findings and facts listed in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Are there any other comments before we take our vote? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Six to zero. The next item on the agenda is to consider a request to vacate 9,966 square foot area of right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 2345 West Ridges Boulevard.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this item and the next item. And it does state that Enclave at Redlands Mesa, and some fellow commissioners asked if I'm associated with that, and I am not, even though it has the same name of a project I do have. But my, our property does border on this property, so I'm going to recuse myself in this one. I discussed it with council, and she agreed that would be appropriate.
Okay, is the applicant present tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you please identify yourself for the record?
Ty Johnson with CART Planning. We are the applicant's representative for this item and the next item.
Thank you, Ty. And are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Is staff ready to proceed?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. And was required public notice given on this matter?
Yes, there was.
And has that been completed pursuant to the city's noticing required requirements?
Yes. As summarized in the staff report, notice has been provided accordance with the code.
Thank you. With that, we can proceed. Could you please introduce your exhibits for the record?
The exhibits would be the staff report with the attachments dated today, May 23rd, 2023. And the second exhibit would be my presentation tonight, also dated today, May 23rd, 2023.
Thank you. Are there any additional exhibits for the record that were not in your report?
No, there aren't any.
Thank you. Please proceed with your presentation.
Right. Good evening, Chair and members of Planning Commission. Krista Nashback, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department. Again, tonight, we have a request to vacate a small piece of public right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 2345 West Ridges Boulevard. And the applicant is Specialized Communication Services Real Estate, LLC. As Ty represented, he will be representing that owner tonight. This vicinity map shows the location of the proposed The Enclave at Redlands Mesa development. The site is located on the south side of West Ridges Boulevard and adjacent to Redlands Mesa Golf Course on the west and south sides of the property. The right-of-way requested to be vacated is in the northwest corner of the site. Not sure what happened to that slide. Oh, well. Zooming in on the site itself, the subject vacation area is only 9,966 square feet. It's a triangular piece of property there where you can just see the arrow in there. On the south side of West Ridges Boulevard, approximately 500 feet west of the School Ridge Road and West Ridges Boulevard intersection. It's at the northwest corner of the proposed development on this site. The right-of-way was originally dedicated in 1980 with the Ridges filing number five. However, this irregular-shaped area of right-of-way is unnecessary to provide access to this parcel or to any other parcel in the vicinity, or to provide the necessary right-of-way needed for West Ridges Boulevard. The proposed vacated area will be incorporated into the overall site design for the proposed development, and new right-of-way will be platted in its place with the Enclave at Redlands Mesa subdivision to provide access to this parcel. There is an existing easement... to the ridges metropolitan district. So, as with any vacation, we have to look at the, the review criteria that are listed here, and staff has found that all six of these criteria have been met for this particular vacation request. And in conclusion, after reviewing the Enclave at Redlands Mesa public right-of-way vacation, staff finds the requested conform with the zoning and development code and is subject to the condition listed here that the vacated right-of-way actually be retained as a utility easement for city-approved utilities as needed in the future. That concludes my presentation. Staff can address any questions.
Okay, well, thank you again. Are there any questions from the commissioners for the staff at this time? Okay, seeing none. Would the applicant like to give a presentation?
Nothing formal. Agree with everything stated by staff in the staff report and in the presentation. And again, the intent with this is really just to clean up an awkward-shaped triangular piece of right-of-way. And as you'll hear in the next item, we have development coming on this parcel, and the idea is to clean that up, vacate that awkwardly shaped right-of-way, and then rededicate a street as a part of future development on the property. So happy to answer any questions about this particular item.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, no questions for you at this time. So at this time, I will open this public hearing up to public comment. Please direct questions to the commission, not the applicant or staff. If testimony is duplicative or repetitious of what has already been presented, please note in your comments agreement or disagreement with preceding testimony. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please note the planning commission may not directly respond to questions that you pose, but that they have heard your question and may choose after public comment to ask the applicant or staff to address specific questions. At this time, are there any members of the public that are present here that would like to provide comment on this item? Okay, you may go to the podium and introduce yourself. Is there a sign-in sheet there as well? And then, please sign in for the record.
David Moore. I live in Shadow Lake Circle in Redlands Mesa. I look directly at this development. My only question is, when the city gives away a right-of-way, are we giving away the right to redo the road going up Ridges Boulevard for traffic? The traffic that's going to come because of the development that's going to go in here, 42, I think it's proposed at 42 duplexes, although I could be wrong. But a lot of development going on a single road, there's going to be a lot of traffic. If the city gives up the right-of-way, does that create any problem for emergency services to get in that right-of-way, or to expand that entry? Should the city need to ever do that for traffic?
Thank you for your question, and that will be responded to. We're not going to respond to it directly right now.
That's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren. Are there any other comments from members of the public present in the building tonight? Seeing none. Is there anyone online? No. Okay, there is none. Okay, if there are no other comments, then I will close the public comment portion of the hearing on this item. Would the applicant like to respond to the question that was posed?
Sure, yes. That's an excellent question, and the answer, the short answer is no. As you see with this image that's up on the screen right now, 80-foot right-of-way is the city's standard for the street designation for Ridges Boulevard. So by vacating this triangular piece, you're not going to prevent yourself as the city from doing any future improvements within that 80-foot right-of-way there. And staff can certainly elaborate if I missed anything there.
Staff, would you like to comment on this matter?
Actually, I believe this section of West Ridges Boulevard is just a local street, and our standard local street is 44 feet wide, and for the public right-of-way, so it well exceeds what's needed for this street.
Thank you. At this time, we will close the public hearing and turn to the planning commission for additional discussion, deliberation, or a motion. Does anybody want to make a comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, on the Enclave at Redlands Mesa vacation of public right-of-way request located adjacent to West Ridges Boulevard and the property located at 2345 West Ridges Boulevard, file, City File Number VAC2022643, I move that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to City Council with the findings of facts and conditions as listed in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. This time, we'll continue down the agenda to item number three, which is to consider requests by Specialized Communication Services Real Estate, LLC, who is the owner and applicant, for review and approval of, one, a hillside exception request, and, two, a planned development outline development plan, ODP, for the enclave at Redlands Mesa development proposal on a 7.6 acre parcel located at 2345 West Ridges Boulevard. Is the applicant here? I see that you are.
Yes, Ty Johnson, CART Planning, applicant's representative for this item as well.
Thank you. And are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Staff, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. And was there required public notice given?
Yes.
And was this notice given pursuant to the city noticing requirements?
Yes, as summarized in the staff report, notice was provided according to the code.
Thank you. With that, we can proceed. Will you please introduce the exhibits for the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have four exhibits, the first one being my staff report with the attachments. That was dated May 23, 2023. Second exhibit would be the comments received from the public prior to the meeting, which we provided to the planning commission yesterday. And then the third exhibit would be the Grand Junction Speaks comments that were made available to the commission as well. And then exhibit four is my presentation tonight, also dated today, May 23, 2023.
Thank you. Are there any additional exhibits that were not in your report?
There are none.
Thank you. With that, you may proceed with your presentation.
Right. Good evening, Chair and members of the planning commission. Again, Krista Nashback, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department. Before you tonight, as you stated, is consideration of a planned development or PD, outline development plan, ODP, for the proposed Enclave at Redlands Mesa project that will establish an overall plan for the property and does include the hillside exception request. The applicant is Specialized Communication Services Real Estate, LLC, and represented by Ty Johnson of CART Planning, as we learned. The applicant is proposing the Enclave at Redlands Mesa project to be constructed on 7.6 acres located at 2345 West Ridges Boulevard within the ridges development. The property is vacant and encompasses generally northeast-facing slopes on the south side of West Ridges Boulevard adjacent to Hole 7 and the driving range of the Redlands Mesa Golf Course. The parcel was created by subdivision that was recorded in 1980 as Lot 1, Block 27, multifamily, the ridges filing number five. It has remained vacant since that time with no adopted site-specific plan. As with other undeveloped parcels within the ridges, a separate more specific plan is required in order to establish zoning guidance for the site. Thus, the applicant has proposed this ODP in order to do so. There are also vacant parcels within the ridges to the north, and the property to the east is presently being developed with fourplex townhomes known as the peaks at Redlands Mesa. All surrounding properties are zoned plan development as either part of the ridges PD or part of the Redlands Mesa development This is the proposed ODP that depicts the land use, general circulation, the default zone district of R8, the requested deviations from the bulk standards, and the phasing plan for the development. West Ridges Boulevard is designated a local street in the circulation plan. The frontage along West Ridges Boulevard and the portion of right-of-way that you just acted upon was, does provide ample access to the site. The proposed ODP shows a single access in the northwest corner of the site with looped public streets providing access within the property. The applicant has proposed two different street sections for the public streets with the, within development, both of which have been reviewed and approved as alternate street standards by the city in order to minimize the right-of-way width and thereby minimize the disturbance to the site. With the proposed density of the underlying zone district of 6.5 units per acre, the maximum number of units on the site would be 49. The 7.6 acre ODP area includes approximately two acres of single-family development, 1.2 acres in rights-of-way, and 4.4 acres of open space. The open space, which comprises 58% of the property, will surround the residential areas within these pods, respect the natural conditions of the site, and provide buffer between this development and neighboring development. The PD zone district is intended to apply to mixed-use or unique, single-use projects to provide design flexibility when long-term community benefits will be derived from the project. In this case, the development will create a residential neighborhood that meets our comprehensive plan and the development requirements of the city. While this specific development provides some benefit to the community through development of an infill site, generally, public benefit is already met by the overall ridges with the existing public trails, open space, and parks within it. For these reasons, staff finds that community benefit will be achieved. Another requirement of the PD ODP process is that an effective period of the ODP and phasing schedule be determined at the time of its zoning. As stated on this exhibit, the applicant proposes that the development will occur in one phase within five years of the date of this approved ordinance. For purposes of assigning a definitive timeframe that our code requires, staff is suggesting an expiration date for this ODP of June 30, 2028. An ODP is also required to set the minimum standards for each land use area. Per code, use, bulk, and other standards for each PD shall be derived from the underlying zone district. Project-specific development standards, including those that may deviate from the default zone, may be approved if explicitly stated in the ODP zoning ordinance. The ODP exhibit on the previous slide includes this listing of the proposed deviations from the standards. The existing standards are shown on the second line of the table for the R8 zone district, and the proposed bulk standards are listed in the first line of the table. As you can see, the only deviations are in the lot size, lot width, side yard, and maximum density. These deviations support the proposed attached single-family product proposed on the site. Planning commission may recommend that the city council deviate from the default zone district standards if, as long as there are any provision of community amenities that exceed what would otherwise be required by the code. These amenities include transportation amenities such as trails, open space reservation of 20% or greater, community facilities for public services beyond those required, the provision of affordable housing or other amenities in excess of minimum standards. As depicted on the ODP that we just saw, the proposed amount of open space exceeds 20%. In addition, since the site is an infill portion of the overall plan for the ridges, the open space requirement has been met for the ridges in its entirety. Staff did not identify any other amenities or elements of the proposed development that meet these considerations. However, given that they do meet at least one of these criterion, staff finds that there are amenities to be provided that would allow for planning commission to recommend these deviations be approved. Regarding the concurrent request for the deviation from the hillside standards, this exhibit of the ODP illustrates how this section of the code is being applied and complied with for the proposed project. The hillside provisions are designed to prohibit development or uses which would likely result in a hazardous situation due to slope instability, rock fails, or stormwater runoff, and excessive soil erosion. The applicant has submitted a preliminary geologic and hazard report, and additional slope stability information for the site and recommendations have been integrated into the planning for the site. In addition to staff review of the study, the Colorado Geological Survey has provided multiple rounds of comments on the proposed development, requested additional information from the applicant, and has now indicated they are comfortable with the engineering provided for this phase. Additional more detailed studies will occur concurrent with submittal of the final plans, and certainly, the Colorado Geological Survey will be included in subsequent review as they have requested. Areas to be developed for the streets and residential lots have been located on the flatter slopes of the site or set into the hillside as much as possible. In addition, the hillside development standards state that development on slopes of greater than 30% is not permitted unless, after review by the planning commission and approval by the city council, it is determined that one, appropriate engineering measures will be taken to minimize the impacts, and, and two, the developer has taken reasonable steps to minimize the amount of hillside cuts and also has taken measures to mitigate the aesthetic impact on the site. The proposed ODP demonstrates the applicant has taken appropriate engineering measures and reasonable steps to identify these areas on the site where development on slopes of greater than 30% will occur. Very few natural areas with slopes over 30% are impacted by this development, and as previously stated, the applicant has proposed two alternate street sections that will minimize disturbance to the site for the streets. Thus, staff finds that these code provisions have been adequately addressed to allow planning commission and city council to approve the areas where lots or roads cross 30% slopes. This is a summary of the requirements and criteria for an ODP. These elements, among others, are discussed in detail in the staff report. While not specifically within this site, its development at a higher density transfers some density from other areas of the ridges as originally intended with the plan, which designated this as a multifamily site on the original plat. Public benefits of the development include the reduced traffic demands due to this being an infill site that is already connected to multimodal opportunities to access nearby recreational and commercial amenities, and approximately 58% of the site will remain as open space, and the proposed development will provide some variety of housing types in this area of the city. As shown on the ODP, the applicant has indicated that the final plan and plat will be developed in one phase within five years of the date of the approval of the zoning ordinance, and staff is suggesting an expiration date at the end of June. And finally, the proposed development meets a number of goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, as well as meeting intent and goals of this R circulation plan and the Redlands Area Plan. The PD ODP must also be evaluated per the standard rezone criteria listed here. Staff has found that at least one of the criteria has been met. The character of the area has continued to evolve and changed significantly, significantly over the last few decades, with the infill and construction of numerous subdivisions for hundreds of residential units surrounding the general vicinity of the proposed development. In addition, the comprehensive plan was adopted, which redefined the future land uses within the urban development boundary, and this development is consistent with that. The proposed project is an infill project, which will have expected but not unusual impacts on public facilities. The recent housing study identified a shortage of housing in the Grand Valley for all variety of housing types and housing units that afford opportunities for residents to move up through of housing types and housing units that afford opportunities for residents to move up through housing choices and costs. This development will provide some variety of housing in the Redlands. The development will create a residential neighborhood that meets the intent of the comprehensive plan and the development requirements of the city. The proposed project provides some benefit to the community through development of an infill site and providing this variety of housing choice. So after reviewing the enclave at Redlands Mesa P D O D P and the hillside exception requests, staff makes the findings a fact listed here pertaining to the relevant criteria in the code and requirements of the O D P and the hillside exception requests. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the P D O D P for the enclave at Redlands Mesa Development with the underlying zone district being R eight, with the deviations requested and including approval of the requested hillside exception and an expiration date of June 30th, 2028. That concludes my presentation, and staff will address any questions at this time.
Thank you once again. We've kept you very busy tonight, and you've done a great job. Thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this time from the commission? Okay. Mr. Johnson, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, I'll just wait for this to come up on the screen here. Excellent. Yeah, I just want to start by saying, very excited to present this to you all this evening. A lot of work has gone into this, a lot of hard work from the design team that's been involved with this project over a year now, and I've been looking forward to this moment. We have some project rendering, some graphic illustrations that we'll show later in the presentation, and you know, a lot of times we get up here and we're very dry and as we need to be, and address approval criteria and things of that matter, but we are excited to present some graphic renderings this evening that'll illustrate the look and feel of the development, and especially how it relates spatially to the surrounding context and how it fits in to the natural and built environment of the area. So up on the screen here is the proposed development. I know we're here talking about zoning, but the proposed development here is sort of the precursor to the zoning, and the zoning was really designed to fit this. We have 46 townhomes over 7.6 acres here, so that's six dwelling units an acre. These are in a two-unit attached configuration, and as Kristin mentioned, 58% of the project is open space, and as you can tell here, that's being used to buffer the surrounding neighboring properties and respect the natural conditions of the site. Also, while this is on the screen, I do just want to point out, I don't know if you all can make out the lot numbers, but in the northeast corner of the site there, the closest lot to the perimeter boundary is Lot 29, and that is 31 and a half feet from the perimeter boundary. As I'm going to go into on the next slide, we also have an additional rear setback on these lots of 10 feet. So on that lot, the closest lot in the northeast boundary, the nearest building would be 41 and a half feet from that eastern property line. On the southern portion, you can see there are some lots that appear a little closer to the perimeter boundary. Lot 14 on the southern side there is the closest lot to that perimeter boundary, and that is 16.2 feet approximately, and then again, there'd be a 10-foot rear setback. So you'd be looking at 26 feet from that perimeter lot boundary. So I wanted to just point that out as I had the opportunity, because I know there has been some discussion on that and some comments in the past. So as Kristin pointed out, we are here to hear an O D P zoning request for this parcel. Up on the screen here is a table that shows, the first row shows pods A and B, that's the requested zoning as a part of the O D P, and then the second row shows the R eight zoning, which is the underlying zone for the property. As Chris pointed out, we're very consistent with the underlying zone. The only differences are density, we are less dense than the underlying zone here. We're looking at, again, the project as proposed, six dwelling units an acre. The density that we are allowing for ourselves through this O D P is 5.5 to 6.5, whereas the R eight zone allows 5.5 to 8. Max lot coverage, we're slightly larger on max lot coverage of 75% versus 70. All the setbacks are the same except for side, where we have a zero side setback, so it'll be a zero lot line configuration on those sides, whereas the front will be standard 20-foot setback from a garage, and then the rear setback would be 10 feet. So very, very similar to the underlying zone of R eight. Minimum lot, or sorry, lot width is 25 feet versus 40, and then lot size is 1,500 versus 3,000. And again, this is all driven by the unique nature of the site and the need we had to make this fit and to allow for that 58% open space to buffer around those attached single-family So as mentioned, along with the O D P, we are requesting a exception from the hillside standards of the city code. A hillside exception is needed for any development to occur on this site, and that's because there are minimum densities. So currently, the minimum density with the ridges planned development, I believe, is 6.8 dwelling units an acre. You just can't hit that without an exception from the hillside standards. And again, we are, we're proposing six dwelling units an acre, but we do, of course, need an exception from those hillside standards in order to achieve that density or the minimum density in this O D P of 5.5. This request is to be judged based on specific standards and criteria in the city code, as Kristin mentioned. Just quickly going through these, the first standard here, prohibit development or uses which would likely result in a hazardous situation due to slope instability, rock falls, or stormwater runoff and excessive soil erosion. As Kristin pointed out, we have, we have a geotechnical and geologic hazard investigation report that was drafted by a reputable professional engineer in the community, submitted to the city and reviewed by the city engineer, also reviewed by a professional engineer with the Colorado Geological Survey, went through a couple rounds of comments with C G S, Colorado Geological Survey, on that, and came to a point where we have adequately addressed all questions by the city and C G S on that report. Number two, minimize the threat and consequent damages resulting from hillside area fires by establishing fire protection measures and adequate emergency vehicle response. So this area is not in a wildfire hazard area, and of course, the roads will meet fire department standards for access. As Chris mentioned, we have gone through a T E D's exception for an alternate street request, so it is, our street template has actually already been reviewed by the fire department, and of course, when we get to the final plan stage, we will be submitting engineering and plans that will then again be reviewed and meet the standards of the fire department, and fire hydrants will also be a part of that. Number three, preserve natural features, wildlife habitats, natural vegetation trees, and other natural plant formations. So I just want to point out that it's in everyone's interest who's been involved in this project to, to do this, to preserve natural features, because they do contribute to the project character. 58% of the project is open space, and that is intended to preserve the natural area so that, you know, it's not a part of a lot, you're not going to see a pergola or grass or anything like that, you're just going to see the natural area there. And then additionally, as you'll see in the renderings, the buildings have been designed to set into the hillside. So number four, provide for safe vehicular circulation and access to recreation areas, natural drainage channels, paths, and trails. As I mentioned, a T E D's exception has been approved for a narrower street, which reduces stormwater runoff because there is less impervious service. It also minimizes cut fill because it's just a narrower street, we don't have to construct a wider street, and that street does allow for pedestrian bike and vehicle circulation. Number five, encourage the location, design, and development of building sites in a manner that will provide for great aesthetic appeal, blend with the slopes and hillside terrain, minimize the scarring and erosion effects of cutting, filling, and grading of hillsides, and prohibit development of ridges as defined. Again, aesthetic appeal is an absolute priority for this project to create a desirable product and a desirable development, and I'm excited to show the renderings that will help visualize how we have done that and set these homes into the hillside. Number six here, encourage preservation of open space by encouraging clustering or other design techniques to preserve natural terrain views and vistas. Again, 58% of the site has been designated as open space, and we have worked hard to set this into the hillside as opposed to building off of the hillside. So a couple other criteria here, as Kristin mentioned, these criteria relate to development on slopes greater than 30%, and as Kristin pointed out, there are some slopes greater than 30%. So these two criteria address that exception request. Appropriate engineering measures will be taken to minimize the impact of cuts, fills, erosion, and stormwater runoff consistent with the purpose of this section. So again, a narrower street template has been approved to reduce cut fill, just a narrower street versus a wider street, so that, of course, reduces the amount of dirt you're pushing around there, and also minimizes stormwater runoff because we just have less impervious surface. Also, as you'll hopefully notice in the renderings, building footprints will serve as retaining walls, which minimizes the impact of fill and the need for extra retaining walls, whereas if we weren't utilizing the buildings in that way, because the site is steep, we would need to have a lot of extra retaining walls, but because of how this has been designed, on those fill slopes, you're going to see homes that are going to act as natural, or act as retaining walls, preventing the need for more retaining walls. The second criteria, the developer has taken reasonable steps to minimize the amount of hillside cuts and also has taken measures to mitigate the aesthetic impacts of cuts through the landscape and other steps. So in terms of minimizing cuts, again, a narrower road for this project, minimal retaining walls, as I mentioned, and then also focusing development on the flatter areas versus the steeper areas is how we achieve that. And excited to present these renderings to help you visualize what the project will look like. We've worked really hard on these, it certainly captures the look and feel of the area. You'll see the peaks development to the left on the screen there, and then in the back, you know, the monument and the golf course. We actually brought in the surface from the grading plan, so contextually, spatially, this is extremely accurate, and it's certainly also what we're after from an architectural standpoint as well. However, you know, colors, windows, things like that certainly could change as we get further into the process, but do want to highlight the accuracy of the spatial context and the grading, especially of the street and how the homes relate to that. So a view here from the east looking west, and then opposite view here from the west looking east with the Mesa in the background, and then real quickly, I do want to show you all a fly-through of the model to give you even a better idea of what the project And that concludes my presentation. Certainly happy to answer any questions you all may have at this time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicant or staff at this time? Okay, if there are no additional questions, and at this time, we will open up the public hearing to public comment. Please direct your questions to the commission, not to the applicant or staff. If testimony is duplicative or repetitious of what has already been presented, please note in your comments agreement or disagreement with preceding testimony. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please note the Planning Commission may not directly respond to questions that you pose, but that they have heard your question and may choose after public comment to ask the applicant or staff to address specific questions. It looks like we already have a member of the public at the podium. Can you introduce yourself?
Excuse me, when does my three minutes start?
After you introduce yourself, we'll hit the button there.
So I'll try to go through my pieces quickly. I'm David Weckerly, 2325 West Ridges Boulevard, Grand Junction, 81507. Speaking as the declarant and the master developer for Redlands Mesa Master Plan Community, also as the owner of the Redlands Mesa Golf Course. First, quickly, let me point out to everyone, the applicant and the city, I don't know where you came up with the enclave at Redlands Mesa, because you're not in Redlands Mesa Master Plan, you're not in the HOA, you're not in my O D P, and you do not have permission to use Redlands Mesa. Part B to that is I also have Redlands Mesa trademarked, just as an FYI, so it is the enclave obviously at the ridges, so I don't know why you wanted to draft off of our branding, but that is not going to be allowed. And I asked tonight if you should cease and desist using Redlands Mesa in your name. Moving on, the Redlands Mesa Master Community fully surrounds, my master plan fully surrounds this piece of land on all three sides with public road on the fourth side. And very unfortunately, and surprising to someone like me in this business, I've had zero contact with the applicant on this, regarding this project, ever really. I went to them last year in July of 2002, when Ted Chivon was still here, and he and I started having a couple talks about several complicated issues involving golf course, 26,000 rounds, 26,000 players going along the back of this project every year, et cetera, et cetera, CCNRs, hey, do I have to put nets up in front of all your houses because we're not going to cooperate on these things? There's lots of stuff to work together on. Nobody ever came back to me ever in over, in a year now. And commissioners, I am not in support of this project as it's currently designed. My real beef, besides there's no contact with the applicants, is this 30% issue. And I am here to request that you enforce the longstanding rules specifically to preserve slopes at 30% or greater and all material rock outcroppings, sorry. I went through my historical notes for Redlands Mesa when I did the original, I did the second round of O D P and master plan approval, and I extracted an interesting section, which I thought would be pertinent to this. I'm going to have to move fast. Redlands Mesa consists of varied topography, constraints limit and or control the site in buildable terrain. Land unsuitable for development because of geological constraints is to be preserved in its natural state. This includes drainage ways, steep terrain in excess of 30 degrees, and rock outcroppings. So I think it's super important, we look at all that. I think, just seeing the last pictures I saw, I thought maybe I was in downtown Houston or somewhere, I don't know where that is, but it's not the look we have out there, and I'm just hoping...
Go ahead, you can finish up, that's fine. Okay.
Am I kicked off?
If you have something really important you want to finish it...
I have something really important, the last comment.
Go ahead and finish.
I didn't even call this. Importantly and lastly, Redlands Mesa, we were entitled to 526 approved entitled units in our master O D P, and we were only able to develop 391 due to the 30% slope and preserving rock outcroppings. Thus, 135 units were not developed, that's 26% reduction in my development because I followed the rules. As developer, you're aware when you purchase a property or before you... As developer, you're aware when you purchase a property or before you close on it, hopefully, that you may not achieve your dream density or easiest development strategy, but you cannot expect the city to waive the rules so you can. Beautiful rock outcroppings and slopes, thirty degrees and stronger, do not grow back. And we followed all the rules, we surround this entire project, everything is thirty and above is preserved and pristine, and I, that's my only problem with this project, and I think live by the rules, make this thing work, change your footprints, work with your product. I love a lot of the things, retaining walls part of the buildings, all that, I think that's great work, but why are we breaking rules? Follow the rule, work your product to make it work, maybe the density tweaks a bit, work with me on the golf course, I don't want to put nets up and block all your views because you won't work with me. We got to come together on this and not have much of city problems of homeowners getting crazy about this whole interaction, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that are present that would like to take
All right, David Born, good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to also register my objection to the thirty percent exception. I'm more concerned about the hazards, and I got to believe there's been a lot of excellent engineers that put that rule in place over the years, that had a lot of qualifications, that it's been there for a long time, and now we're making exceptions. And I particularly want to voice my objection to that exception in the northeast corner, east by northeast corner, where we do have residential units almost at the base of that slope. Yes, you may be set back forty feet from the perimeter boundary of the, of the property, but those, those proposed development sites are going right up next to, in and next to the steepest parts of that hill. And near the base of that hill is where I live, is along with other people, in the, in the, in the Peaks. The other objection I have is the characterization by the staff report that nobody objected to this in the August 4th, 2022 meeting, where it says neighbors were unopposed to the hillside request. Well, I objected to the building on steep slopes, and I know at least one other person in that meeting did as well. And I also want to point out that that meeting itself was inadequate in terms of how it characterized the magnitude of the thirty percent slopes. This is, and I'll share this with the, with the commission, I've got a couple of copies here of each of these. I've got Exhibit A, my exhibit, that shows what was shared at that August 4th meeting. You can probably see a couple little shady splotches on there. That's what was presented, the only piece that was presented that showed any thirty percent slope on the parcel. But these, these shaded pieces pertain to those with twenty feet of grade change, which means these pieces, as I understand it, were excluded from the density calculations. But it has nothing to do with what we saw in the presentation by staff, which is this, which is quite different, especially in that east by northeast corner. So, we didn't get to see this on October 4th, and we didn't get to see the cut and fill plan either. So, all that would have probably elicited a lot more protests, I would think, by the people at that meeting on August 4th. I do think that, again, you know, just the words that they use in that standard, you know, hazardous, erosion, it's got a lot of potential, especially with things that we can't predict, and the intensity of storms and things that we're getting across the country with climate change. You know, we can say we can engineer our way out of this, but those things are there for a reason, and they've been withheld for a long time. I thank you for your time. Can I approach the commissioners with these copies?
Certainly. Yes.
Okay.
This is what was shared with us at the meeting on August 4th. Exhibit A, this is a screenshot from the presentation of the staff just gave. Do not... Just want to start that one at that end and then... All right. You may proceed.
Commissioners, my name is Connie Fedge. My husband, Tom, and I live at 382 West Ridges Boulevard, Unit A, Peaks Town Homes. Our unit is right next to the property in question. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to comment on this exception. We are concerned that a rule put in place for good reasons can even be considered for an exception. This is disturbing, especially as ours and our Peaks neighbors' homes sit at the bottom of the slopes affected by the exception. We are concerned that the developer's solution of making streets less wide and limiting sidewalks thereby attempting to lessen disturbance in surface area is enough to assure us and all of the residents at the Peaks that our homes won't be affected by runoff and erosion from this adjoining property. We already see soil erosion and runoff results from the naturally occurring lay of the land. Are there plans in place by the developer for stormwater mitigation from the streets, sidewalks, and forty-six-plus roofs? This question applies to the consideration of this exception because where the water runs to is affected by the slopes of this piece of property, in addition to the composition of the soils and any excavating of the ground. Will a site-specific geotechnical design be required for approval by the city for work in areas with slopes greater than thirty percent, and if so, who will be responsible for the construction quality assurance and quality control in these areas? Will the developer be required to put up a bond to take care of any repercussions, foreseen or unseen, from the excavation of and construction on this property? What assurances do we downstreamers have that the developer will be held accountable for doing the work properly and with integrity? When we read language in the staff report analysis such as, quote, "at least for this early phase of development," quote, quote, "certainly as specific design and engineering in these areas progress," end quote, we are greatly concerned with what actually will happen on the site and who will be watching over the shoulder of the developer to make sure that the developer will be doing what they are supposed, i.e., agreed, to do, and when and where the checks and balances will occur. My husband and I have had personal experience with a land developer who agreed to do all that the city, county required of them, then turned around and did what they wanted, and then apologized later, but did not do the right thing, fix their errors, or, and/or compensate those they harmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
My name is Amy Born. I also live in the Peaks at Redlands Mesa, directly across from the hillside that is being developed. Sorry, I'm nervous. While everything being done here may be perfectly legal, the lack of consideration for people who have already invested in property here is disturbing and frustrating. By the time we, by the time we get to weigh in, it's presented to us as basically a done deal, and that these hearings and notifications are merely a formality. As previously stated, we didn't get full information, we didn't get all correct information, and yet this is our opportunity to comment when we're still, when we still have a lot of questions. My husband and I are just coming up on one year since moving into our, moving into our home. Because we live in a center unit, we have very few windows. The majority of our windows face the, directly face the hillside where this development is going. Those windows are our main source of natural light and the views we see. In the short time we've been here, we've enjoyed the privacy and serenity of our garden, the view of the hillside, the rock outcroppings, vegetation, birds and wildlife, and the sky. It's devastating to think that view will now be obliterated by the homes in this development. We also have concerns about how we'll be impacted by the construction, which could be ongoing for five years. What's in place to mitigate noise and dirt? What recourse do we have if we experience damage to our property as a result of the construction during or after? I know from your perspective, looking at these drawings and maps and beautiful pictures and diagrams, you don't see a significant impact to us. In fact, that flyover view did not show the view that we will have of those buildings. I really wish you could come to my home, stand in my garden, look out my windows, and see what is being proposed, see if what is being proposed here would be acceptable to you. I know there is very little chance that this is not going to happen, but I hope when you consider future developments, you will think a little more about the people and homes already in place and how what you, how what you do will impact them from their perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public would like to comment? I see one.
I'll sign in after. My name's Marcia Moore. I also live up in the Redlands, across on Shadow Lake. My question is, they talk about preserving some of the rocks, some of the ambiance that that hill provided, and as a gentleman said earlier, that, according to your flyby through, that's all gone. They are leveling the hill, from what I can see. Now, how is that acceptable? I don't understand how you can leave the rock but then not leave the rock. Are the rocks still there in this design? On that plot, are there still any of those big, beautiful boulders? Me?
I, I'm sure the applicant will, will respond to that question. That's not a question we can respond directly to.
Yeah, that'd be my question, is what is left of the environment that it's starting from?
Okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you very much.
My name's Steph Hero. I live at 318 Shadow Lake Court. My concern is, with the development that they're proposing, so much of it is golf course side, but yet because it's ridges, they would not be under our HOA. They would not have to contribute annually to our dues. We have no idea what the ridges guidelines are for properties, such as above-ground pools, campers, swing sets, pet chickens, things like that. Where we live, we have a, our, our community maintains a beautiful sidewalk around the development, used by many, many people. Many people drive up and use the sidewalk facility to see the views, to enjoy the wildlife, to look at all the beautiful homes that look different from one to another, that creates interest and creates value. This property is just manufactured. They might as well just be making them in a factory and just setting them on footings. It shows no quality, no creativity. And if we have to be, we joyfully follow our HOA rules to our neighbors so that we have nice property. And if this is ridges and not redlands, but yet they're bordering so much onto the golf course, it's not fair, truly not fair. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public present here that would like to make comments? Seeing none, are there any members of the public online that would like to comment on this item?
Yes, we do. For the record, Jacob Kaplan, planning technician. David and Holly Chavez noted that they're opposed to granting a hillside exception in the planned development. Significant portions of the lot are in excess of thirty-degree slopes in their current state. Existing outcroppings and wildlife habitat should be left undisturbed. Erosion and water damage to current structures is likely with land disturbance. Appropriate engineering for slopes over thirty degrees will most certainly disturb the aesthetics. And then Todd Brown says, "Has or will a hydrologic study been completed? Concern that this development will exacerbate runoff through the seventh fairway of the golf course and adjoining wetland areas, which already require some pumps on existing homes to the south of the fairway?"
Thank you. Last chance. Anybody from the audience that did not get a chance to speak want to get up? Okay, this time, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments?
Yes, I would. I want to start by saying it's a complete mischaracterization to state that we are intending on or are breaking the rules. That's not at all our intention. The rules exist, an exception process exists. To deviate from those rules, that's what we're here discussing this evening. Development on hillsides is not unprecedented in our community. That's one of the reasons the exception process does exist. This has been done before, and as staff provided testimony and I provided testimony, there are specific standards and criteria that are to be met and that this is to be judged on. Staff has recommended approval, and I've provided testimony as to how we feel we meet those criteria. So, I would appreciate that we just focus the conversation through that lens. In terms of geologic hazards, we addressed, we addressed that a geotech report was drafted and submitted by a professional engineer. It was reviewed by the city engineer, it was reviewed by a governmental agency, the Colorado Geological, Geological Survey. We went through a couple rounds of comments with them, an addendum was provided, and we adequately addressed their concerns. So, that's just to say that geotechnical engineers are the experts, certainly more qualified than myself, or probably others in this room, and we did address their geologic hazard concerns. In terms of the exhibits, certainly not trying to hide anything, all of the exhibits are included in the public record. They have been submitted as a part of the application, a grading plan, the geotech report, the addendums to the geotech report, the comments from Colorado Geological Survey, all of that is available. I am happy to talk with anyone about the project, about the process, and where we're at, at any time, and staff is, of course, always available as well. In terms of views, just to be completely frank, and no disrespect here, but views are a privilege and not a right. There's no conservation easement on this property. It's not protected open space. It is private property. It is a prime piece of ground. It is a prime piece of ground. It's an infill, infill site. It has public infrastructure available to serve it and it will be developed at some point. There was a comment about who will watch over the project in terms of, from a regulatory standpoint, and that's, of course, the city, city staff. It's a rigorous development process. We are just at the zoning stage here. If approved, we would move forward with the final plan application. There are tons of standards and codes that need to be met and reviewed, likely go through multiple rounds of comments with the city. So it's just to say that there are certainly experts who are watching over our shoulders throughout this process. And again, with the rocks, I mean, the, the site will be graded and developed. However, as I mentioned in my presentation, it is in everyone's best interest to preserve the character of this site. From the applicant to the surrounding neighbors to the community as a whole. I mean, it's no one's intention to remove rocks that contribute to the character. That wouldn't serve the developer very well. So everyone in the design process to this point and through construction is going to be interested in preserving those rocks. And many of the rock outcroppings on the perimeter, at least with current designs, will be preserved. One other quick comment here on HOA. There, I believe the ridges HOA dissolved a long time ago. This, this project will have its own HOA. It'll have its own covenants. And so that will absolutely be a part of this. It'll be submitted to the city as a part of the final plan process. It'll be reviewed by city staff and will likely go through rounds of comments on that as well. That is all I have in my notes here. I'll bring up the civil engineer on the project to address a couple of the engineering comments as well.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Hi, my name is Ivan Gier. I'm with River City Consultants, the engineer for the applicant. We have performed preliminary engineering in regards to stormwater control and erosion control. Runoff from the streets and roofs, the vast majority of that will be collected in the streets and discharged on West Ridge's Boulevard, most likely with some stormwater infrastructure upgrades to improve the conveyance. The, the stormwater containment measure for the entire area is Shadow Mesa Lake. Any runoff that does not go to the street will end up in riprap or some other similar expensive type of erosion protection system that will actually probably likely reduce the amount of erosion you're seeing from just natural runoff over bare dirt that there is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gier. Are there any questions from the commission for the applicant or the staff at this time?
I have a question for each. For the applicant, the, can you refresh me what the, what the lot size is and with the extent to which you've gone through the design? You mentioned there were setbacks and whatnot already on those lights as well. Do you know what the, the targeted or average size of the, your square footage of the, of the units would be?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me pull this up. It's, the lots are roughly around anywhere from 1,800 to, I think, 2,100 square feet. And the building's going to occupy much of that lot. Like I said, there will be a front setback. There's going to be a garage in the front. And then there will be a rear setback as well, probably just a little patio space for a grill or something like that. But just looking at these lots, you know, 1,800, 2,000, 1,900, so kind of in the ballpark of, you know, 1,700 to 2,100, let's say.
And the, and the PD requirements give a maximum lot coverage of 75%, right?
That's correct.
So we're talking about a, a unit that's between 1,200 and 50 to 1,500 square foot each, right?
Footprint, yeah, exactly.
And then, so if combined, you have, you have the shared wall as is, as intended, the total mass or square footage of that structure, of that building that you see, would be between 2,400 and 3,000 square foot. Is that right?
When, yeah, when looking at two units attached is your point? Yeah, I'd prob, exactly. Probably be around there as designed currently.
Okay, thanks. Steph, do you have any idea? I, I couldn't find it in the, and just for, for lack of being able to get through it, but do you have any idea what either the CCNRs or the existing, the CCNRs of, of the surrounding neighborhoods, including Redlands Mesa, have for a minimum square footage on their, on their homes? Or do we know what, what the average size is? And I know there's a representative here tonight and if you can provide that answer too.
I don't know if there is, or if there is, especially for the ridges, what it is. But yes, Mr. Wickerly should be able to answer that question of what's required in the, in the Redlands Mesa development. I, I don't know. But I'm, for a single-family home, I would guess it's around the 3,000 square feet.
Rather than speculate, Mr. Chair or, or Ms. Beard, is it appropriate to ask the representative who spoke earlier from Redlands Mesa at this point? Just what, if there is a?
It's fine, it's fine with me. Is that? I, I think we're open for that, yes. Go ahead.
Mr. Wickerly, would you be willing to?
So there really is not a defined house size in Redlands Mesa. Very few projects start off doing that. I'd say for the maybe couple that there is, they are minimums of, I'm going to say 2,500 square feet. But we don't have, we didn't lay that project out more in terms of lot sizes. So we know, for example, our lots are, say, 3.52 average per acre on our smallest, tightest, tightest conditions.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from the commissioners for applicant or staff?
I had one more for staff, actually. When we do subdivisions that are anywhere near agricultural, there is required, you know, enjoyment of use, plat notes for, for agricultures and whatnot that surrounds it. One of the things that has been, they call it a pet peeve, has certainly been disappointing for our, for our youth is that oftentimes when we build parks with, with lights and whatnot to allow them to play in the evening, subdivisions then come around it and then the people within complain that the lights are too bright. Then next thing you know, we're, we're limiting the ability for our kids to play. And I see that same thing in a very different context. And, and it was mentioned in the comments about if this subdivision comes up adjacent to a driving range, for example, what tools and, and are there tools? And if so, what tools are there to eliminate the, the burden, I guess, on the existing use there for having to do things such as, as nets or, or anything else? Is there anything?
Not that I'm aware of that, that would require this developer to do anything. I mean, if there's really a, a large concern, I know with some of the other development out by Tiara Rado, we asked the developer to work with the golf course and at least show if there was a slice zone or something that would impact these lots. I think with this topography here, that's very unlikely. And as you saw, I think there's existing homes and existing, you know, development out there that's much closer to the golf course than this will be. But, you know, I think we may ask them that if, when they come in with their final plan to show us if there's any encroachment of some area where golf balls may go astray. But I, and, and I know in the development where we did have some that we just made sure that the building envelope was outside of, outside of that area. So I think we do have the ability to at least request that information. I'm not sure how much we can actually request that, the developer put, protection up. I don't know if our council has any thoughts? No? Okay.
You, you may, you may have answered it. And it starts with some conversation with the adjacent users along those lines to find out if, in fact, there, there is a problem that warrants being addressed, right? So we've had a comment thus far tonight that says that that, that outreach or, or conversation hasn't been, hasn't been had. Do you have any notes or otherwise that indicates an effort to, to get that done? Or what, how could we bring that to resolution? And, and maybe that's a, a question for the applicant as well in, in terms of approaching the adjacent users there at Redlands Golf Course?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely open to that conversation. As Mr. Wickerly mentioned, Ted and I did sit down with him a while ago and just discussed CCNRs and things of that matter. I'm, of course, not the property owner, but I am the representative of the applicant. And to the degree that I can, I'd be happy to be a part of those discussions and to convey the message to the owner and the applicant.
I have a, sort of a follow-up to that. Ty, maybe you can address this. Can you put the map of the development back up again? When I went out and looked at this property from the street view, it looks like a big basin or a bowl with a ridge line and then pretty steep slope and then it kind of scoops down to the land. And I don't have a sense of where the property line is with regard to the ridge line. Does it go over the backside or is the property line basically the ridge line?
The high point of the ridge that you're referring to is, is on the driving, it's basically a part of the driving range. So if you, you know, there's a grading plan that was submitted, a survey that was submitted, that will show topography lines, which is quite helpful. Or on the city's website, you're also able to look at topo lines. So I was looking at that before the meeting this evening because I was actually curious in that exact same thing. And the high, the high point is not on the property. The high point meaning like when you're down in the street of Ridge's Boulevard and you're looking at the site, that high, high point that's over there is, is not on the property.
And, and that, so you're talking about on the driving range side. What about on the south side, which would be adjacent to the hole, the seventh fairway? I think, if I have that right.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Because that's, that's, I think, where golf balls might come from. When you're on the seventh hole, you're hitting out towards the west, I think. And if you really slice when it goes up, there's a pretty steep hillside there. I think the top of that hillside is, is the ridge line that we're talking about seeing from the other side.
Yeah, that, that side, you know, down there by, if you can see these numbers like 1920, 21, 22, those are largely fill slopes there. Whereas, you know, meaning that they're kind of sloping down toward the golf course. The, the high point, again, is kind of over by 13, Lot 13, and really to like the southwest of that. But in terms of golf balls, I mean, you know, the owner is well aware of the presence of the golf, golf course. And development on golf courses is not unprecedented. It's something that will definitely be considered and people who are looking to buy will be well aware of that.
Okay, so just to, um, perfectly clear, those, those lots in the teens there, say 15 through 20 or 22, those would be looking down at the seventh fairway? Is that correct? Or would those be looking at the street? I don't think they can be both.
No, yeah, they'll be looking down at the golf course over there.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, this kind of shows it. This is that high point over here. I don't know if you can see my, and then I think this is kind of what you're referring to is this area.
And looking at the contours, there's roughly somewhere between 30 and 40 feet from edge of fairway to rear of those lots, approximately 30 to 40 feet vertical difference.
Okay, thank you. That just helps me get a visualization. It's, when you stand at the street and just look at the bare property, I don't think, you don't really see the golf course. That, that's all hidden. So it wasn't clear to me exactly where the houses were going to be. Mr. Wickerly, go ahead. Yeah, that's okay. Okay, that, that's helpful. I, I was wondering what that line was, if that, if that's the? Okay, great. Thank you very much. But, thank you, both of you.
Do you have another question for staff, if I may?
Go ahead.
Steph, have you had a chance to see or, or do these images that were provided to us on the difference between the maps provided at one of the prior neighborhood meetings and the maps provided in the, in the presentation tonight? Are you familiar with these at all?
Well, the second one is, I believe, the same one that I showed you that is part of the ODP.
Yeah.
The first one, I believe, was shown and I don't have, I never received a copy of it, but I think it was used at the neighborhood meeting. But at that point, they hadn't, I mean, for a neighborhood meeting, we don't require the detail that they were required to submit with their actual application. And so, and, but yet, when they did submit the application, those materials are available to the public.
Well, then, I'd like to share how I'm interpreting these maps and then if either staff can confirm or the applicant can confirm if, if my understanding is correct. But the, the map that was presented or, or presented to be the one that was put forth at the neighborhood meeting, the way that's different, it's, it's the same map, but the information being shown, if I'm correct, is that this only indicates those portions of the 30% slope, which encompass a greater than 20-foot fall contiguous.
That's correct.
And that's the way our code reads. Those are the ones, only that, that ground of 30% slope that goes over a 20-foot fall is what the, except, or the, the hillside requirements apply to. So the, having made these maps before, they, they look from it. So this is showing all 30% slopes and, and it seems to express that as well in the, in the legend. But it does not differentiate between those at which the hillside regulations apply, those being something with more than 20-foot of fall versus all instances of 30% or greater slope, which could be a, a rock face or it could be a smaller portion. And I want to make sure that that's a, a correct understanding. And if it's not, I'd like to know what the difference is.
Sure, yeah, I'll do my best. So the exhibit that shows 30% over 20-foot fall, that is in the hillside standards. And that was presented at the first neighborhood meeting. I didn't conduct that one. We've had two. I believe, I don't, I can't speak to the context. As Kristen mentioned, we weren't really where we are now when that was presented. However, that specific provision in the code, that is a 30% grade with a 20-foot fall, I believe is just specific to the calculation for dense, for lot size as it relates to the hillside requirements. Whereas, there is a statement in the hillside requirement that no development will occur on 30% greater slopes unless it meets the criteria of the exception. So staff can correct me on that. I, you know, I'm a planner. I, I spend a lot of time reading and interpreting codes. And this, this one, it, it kind of baffles me sometimes. The hillside regulations, it's, it's a little bit difficult to understand. But that's my understanding of the 20-foot grade difference piece.
Staff, do you have any comments on that?
No, I'd agree with that. That's the correct analysis.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other?
Okay, I'll go because it's related to this hillside exception conversation. I just want to make sure I understand what the review criteria are, I guess, for when there's an exception ask. So I'm looking in the staff report under the hillside development standards, starting on page nine. And I guess I'm interpreting and what I'm hearing is we have this language with the 30% and the 20-foot fall and all of that. And then if there's a ask for an exception, you walk through these standards and decide whether they've been addressed? Like, what? whether they've been addressed? Like, what is that criteria? Is that the engineer's feedback? Like, I just want to make sure I understand that exception process because I'm not fully clear on it, I guess.
There are standards stated, I believe, that, that the applicant needs to address in the materials that are presented to staff and to you all. And then there are specific criteria which are required for you to assess of whether, to be able to develop on those slopes, assess that they have provided the proper information, but also the two criteria that I stated being, I'm just trying to find that section.
What's on the screen is mimicking what's in the code as well.
Those two. And so, it's kind of, it's looking at the standards, but I would, from your standpoint, I would say you can assume this, the staff, that we are comfortable that yes, the proper information has been provided. I was not until we had that letter from Colorado Geological Survey saying, we're okay with it at this phase. And I made them go through three, three rounds of review with the CGS. So I would not have brought it to you had staff not, you know, addressed those basic standards of the information they've provided us. And so, your task, I believe, is the, the two, the criteria themselves that are on the screen. Does that help a bit?
Yeah, I just wasn't clear on what, I would think I was confusing the standards language and then what the actual criteria are, so that was helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to ask this question based, based upon the conformity of the area because I don't, I don't think it's a far stretch to look at the Shadow Run townhomes. And this is a question for both staff as well as the applicant. I'm looking at the Shadow Run townhomes and I'm very familiar with that area. There's, you know, multiple block walls. There's a pretty significant grading change in that area, as well as just the conformity of townhomes attached and also square footage because you're looking at thirteen forty-three square foot on an average, two-story. So I'm just going to ask the question in regards to, did staff or the applicant look at that specific area in regards to any exceptions made there? Because it does seem, it does seem kind of familiar or similar to what we're talking about tonight. And so, just because of the, the proximity to this development, I just figured I'd ask.
I don't believe that the standards or the exception process or even the hillside requirements were in our code at the time that Shadow Mesa was developed.
I can speak to Pinnacle Ridge. They went through a hillside exception request. I used to work on that project. That's obviously not in the immediate vicinity, but it is up the hill. And again, I believe there are numerous other examples.
Thank you.
Other questions for applicant or staff from the commission at this time? Seeing none at this time, we will close the public hearing and turn to Planning Commission for additional discussion, deliberation, and eventually a motion. Who would like to start us off?
I'm going to keep it pretty simple. You know, typically, we don't get such a detailed overview of a project like we did tonight. We don't necessarily see renderings, you know, street cut-ins. So with the applicant, I, I really appreciate the fact that they prepared such a detailed report. You know, typically on an R eight, and I'm going to just, for an example, look at an R twelve project, we typically don't see, you know, renderings in regards to height, what a development could potentially look like. So, I don't know. My, my, my thought behind this before his presentation was maybe a little bit questionable. But, yeah, I, I just, to keep it simple, I do appreciate their, their report very much. I think, I think this project, you know, it's, it's well-suited for the area. I can't, can't say there, I have too many objections in regards to the process. I know that there's been some concerns in regards to, you know, who's overseeing the project. As somebody who constructs single-family homes in, in the area, we typically have to do engineered drainage reports on the smallest lots. You, single-family, eight-thousand square foot lots, ten-thousand square foot lots, there is a process. And, and it's a process of, of not only hiring, hiring a private engineering firm, but also having the city take a look at that. And it is, it is, has to be followed to a T. They go out, survey, you have the landscaper properly, and there's been times where we have to, had to bond in order to, in order to meet all the qualifications that the city puts on us. So I have complete confidence in the developer that they can perform this as well as the city to oversee the project. So for that, I will be in favor of, of the request.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have other discussion or comments from the commissioners?
I, I got to start with an oopsie. There was a, a very reasonable question regarding, not, not just the hillsides, but the actual rock features and those significant features. And I don't think we, we, we got a good answer from that before kind of closing that section of the hearing. But in, in the absence of that, there is language and protocol in our codes that protect those sorts of things. They don't necessarily say that you can't be on them or integrate with them or whatnot, but there, there is, there is, you know, code standards that, that fit there. And quite frankly, it means that it isn't necessarily something from a design phase that we need to get into here tonight because those codes already exist and they will be required to be, to be followed, to whatever extent they, they do apply to the features that are out there. So I wanted to acknowledge that real quick. You'd be hard-pressed to find a stronger opposition to our hillside requirements in this town. We're in western Colorado and all over the mountain towns and canyon towns and everything else, we, we are certainly capable through the appropriate engineering, architecture and otherwise, of building safe homes. So the idea that we have to have these lot widths and these certain sizes based on, you know, a slope map instead of being based on actual engineering and architectural design, seems, seems challenging to understand. With that said, we have very specific code. It is in place and so my opinion matters not here. The, the variance and, and in part of that code, looking at the criteria of looking for, for why would we make the exceptions? To me, these, these exceptions and what's been done do seem to meet those qualifications at a reasonable amount of engineering and, and thought and review by multiple agencies whose sole purpose is to make sure that they've looked at these things. And they have now said, yep, the right kind of things have been, then, been done to mitigate those segments of the thirty percent slopes that do apply to our, our regulations. It seems like a long way of saying it, but it is important to note that only those sections in which there's more than twenty percent fall are applicable to those. So I don't, I don't have a problem with the, with the hillside exceptions and, and not so sure that that language isn't the wrong language. It, it seems more so that there's a proposal for the hillside mitigation in order to get products on there safely and not have negative impacts down the road. I, I've already stated some of my thoughts on, on what, what responsibilities both the developers and future owners of this property have in regards to their adjacency to the golf course. So the, so the last element here that, that I, my inquiries regarding the lot sizes, the square footage is, is that this doesn't look too different to me than, than a lot of what's already out there as far as what the building masses and visually what we're looking at and what we're seeing from any adjacency properties. Don't make any mistake here that it is no longer going to be an open hillside. And, and that private is privately owned and has the ability to develop. Control of private property goes to the owner and, and if we want control, we need to own those things. So there's an element there. And, and then furthermore, I think that it is directly in alignment with our, our comprehensive plan that's trying to, to find more ways of getting more units and housing opportunities into areas where there is existing infrastructure, sewer, water, road capacities, multimodal and recreation. And, and this fits there. So just because this is two separate ownerships for the same size home as what might otherwise be found in that area, I, I don't, I don't feel like that's a, I don't feel like that's a negative. I don't, I don't understand why that would be, you know, a challenge here. So from that perspective, maybe a far reach, but visually speaking, it's going to look more like half of the density than, than what the numbers would project out there because you have two units in the same, similar footprint as the larger homes that are around there. So overall, as far as tucking in and fitting into a, or a piece of property that's kind of, kind of just this little knuckle here in between these others, this, this seems appropriate. And outside of being disappointed that there really hasn't been more communication with, with the adjacent users, as is so often such a big deal of what we hear on this, whether it's next to other residential subdivisions or otherwise, that's, that's very troubling and I hope we can improve on that. And I hope the applicant will, will make that effort for sure. But it's, doesn't warrant holding this otherwise compliant project up in, in my mind.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments or discussion from the commissioners at this time? I'll just throw in my two cents. I'm basically in agreement with my fellow commissioners. I do think it's really unfortunate that this is, the Ridges and Redlands Mesa, you know, are not in concert on this, it appears. And the Ridges having properties right on the golf course seems, seems odd to me, but that's just the cards we're dealt with. I think those things were decided a long time ago. And I think they do add challenges in, in terms of everybody getting along and getting on the same page. But I don't think, you know, they rise to the level of disapproving a conforming application here. If there are no further comments or discussion, would anybody like to entertain a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion. Chairman, on the Plan Development, PD, outline development plan, ODP, for the proposed, the enclave at Redlands Mesa development for the property located at twenty-three forty-five West Ridges Boulevard, PLD two-zero-two-two-eight-eight-seven ODP, that amends the overall plan for the Ridges and includes hillside exceptions. I move that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council with the findings of facts stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Seacrest. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Is there any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. At this point, we have two more agenda items. I would propose we take a five-minute break and then reconvene. Thank you. Yeah.
[inaudible]
As described in the staff report. And the proposed amendments support the following planning principle, number five, strong neighborhoods and housing choices of the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of their request, and I am here for questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions for staff slash applicant at this time?
I have a question, and it's limited to the comment that we received here because I know we've come back and forth on this a whole lot, and even recently it seemed like, wow, we really ironed a lot of things out. Can you speak to that comment? And for what it's worth, this comment is referring to a limit of 10%, no more than 10%. Well, let's see, for lots with four units... Should I stop and let you talk? You're nodding like you've got this. I've seen that look in my wife before.
Yeah, so the comment from actually the public policy manager of Airbnb was that if you are in that over four range but under 10, that you technically have an option for nothing because you wouldn't comply with a 10% minimum or 10% maximum. So I think the easiest thing to do here is to put the 10% maximum with a minimum of one being allowed. Because I think that's the intent.
So then if we were to make a motion, it might be on the condition that a... or recommend a revision that might say something to the nature of, you know, no more than one STR up to 10 units and no more than 10% for 10 units or more? Or what would be a...
I don't think you want to change the for and under because what you just said would take away the two option, I think. So I think the way to phrase it is to amend the language for over four dwelling units to include a minimum of one, short-term rental permit.
To allow a minimum of one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Great.
Other questions or comments for the staff applicant at this time? Okay. Seeing none at this time, I'll open the public hearing up to public comment. Please direct questions to commission. If testimony is duplicative or repetitious of what has already been presented, please note in your comments agreement or disagreement with preceding testimony. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please note, the planning commission may not directly respond to questions that you posed, but they have heard your questions and may choose after public comment to ask the applicant or staff to address specific questions. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comments regarding the short-term rental ordinance? Seeing none in the House, is there anybody online that's looking to make a comment on this?
No, there are not.
Okay. Well, that doesn't give you anything to respond to, Nicole, so I think we can go ahead and close the public comment portion and turn to the commissioners for further discussion or deliberation or a motion.
I think it's worth noting, at least for the record, that this has been a big element with a lot of input. And while there hasn't been a whole lot of discussion or whatnot here tonight, that this has certainly been an ongoing process with a lot of back and forth with interactions with a lot of stakeholders and staff and planning commission and otherwise. So on things that move kind of quick, I'm always compelled to make sure it's noted in the record that this isn't just a willy-nilly.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I will add on and say, I think it's a testament to an amazing job that the staff has done on this particular matter. It was very contentious at various points, and they managed all the differing opinions and I think ultimately threaded the needle and have come up with something that makes great sense and is unique and specific to our community. And we all are very appreciative of that. Any other comments or motions?
I'll just comment. So, you know, again, I'm going to just repeat what everybody else has said up here. A lot of time has been spent on this, so I applaud, you know, staff and fellow commissioners as well as just the city council and everybody else has had their input on this. You know, and I want to add in that 10% just because it was, you know, focusing on the kind of the fabric of that downtown area. So just because it... I don't know, and I apologize if I'm repeating what was already said, but it's... There is a section there, so short-term rental permits shall not be issued for more than 10% of the... Excuse me, residentially zoned lots within the downtown area defined as south of North Avenue, west of Seventeenth Street, north of the Interstate 70 Business Loop, and east of Highway 50. So again, I think I read that specifically because that is an area that they've really focused on to keep that fabric, to keep, make sure that, you know, it addresses the areas of concern. So, yeah, that's all I have there. Good job, everybody, and yeah, I'm definitely in favor.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm going to add on to my own comment, just as a matter of public record, to say that the short-term rental operators and owners of this community were also very helpful and knowledgeable and good to work with throughout this process. They know the business. They had some very insightful comments that helped us along, helped us understand it and come up with new ordinances that were agreeable to them and to us, and I think they should also be commended. Does anybody want to make a motion, particularly Commissioner Ellers, who seems to understand the math problem?
Yeah, sure. On the request to amend the zoning and development code, Section 2104030, use specific standards, specifically Item H, short-term rentals, and Section 2110020 terms defined of the Grand Junction Municipal Code, File Number ZCA 2022756, I move that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council with the findings of fact listed in the staff report, along with an amendment to Section 5 that would allow eligibility to have a minimum of one STR for those lots with between four and 10 dwelling units.
Okay, we have a motion that has already received a thumbs up for accuracy. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Okay, our next and final item on the agenda is to consider a request from Brian Bray to zone 8.33 acres from county residential single-family rural RSF-R2, R5, residential 5.5 dwelling units per acre located north of Appleton Elementary, west of Green Apple Drive, and east of 23 and a half Road. Is the applicant present?
This is Ivan Gere, representative for the applicant with River City Consultants.
Thank you, Mr. Gere. Are you ready to proceed?
We are not planning to present at this time.
Okay, fine, then we will go ahead and proceed with the staff report. Staff, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, I am.
Before beginning presentations was the required public notice given?
Yes, it was.
And was that pursuant to the city's noticing requirements?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Could you please introduce the exhibits for the record?
Yes. Exhibit one is the development application. Exhibit two is the annexation schedule and table. Exhibit three is the annexation plat. Exhibit four is site maps and photo. Exhibit five is public comment dated 5/11/23. And exhibit six is the zone of annexation ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any additional exhibits?
No, there were two public comments made on Grand Junction speaks which have been distributed to the planning commission.
Thank you. You may proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. For the record, Nicole Kehlhouse interim planning supervisor. So tonight's request is for Apple Glen West, and it is a zone of annexation from county RSF-R, which is single-family rural, to city R5, which is residential with a maximum of five and a half dwelling units per acre. So the annexation, Grand Junction Venture... Sorry, wrong applicant. The applicant, Brian Bray, acting on authority from the Mesa County School Board, has requested annexation of Apple Glen West, which is about 8.33 acres. The annexation request will be heard separately by City Council. The zone of annexation for the property requested is from, as I said, from county RSFR to a city R5. Here we can see the subject property location approximately two-thirds of a mile north of Interstate 70, directly abutting the Appleton Elementary School and to the west of the Apple Glen subdivision. This kind of just gives another look at that property with the aerial view underneath it. The property owners are requesting annexation in anticipation of future residential development on the property. Any residential development would be in conformance with the assigned zone district at the time of annexation, which as requested currently is R5. This map shows the future, the land use in the area. The subject property has a designation of residential low and includes a density, which includes a density range of two to five and a half dwelling units per acre, and the R5 is an implementing zone district for this designation. The zoning in the area lands adjacent to this in the county or zone RSFR or R4 in the city. Nearby city zone sites also include R8 and neighborhood business or B1. Within the areas that are in the county still, there's been little development on these properties, and a lot of agricultural uses remain. The R5 zone district requires a minimum of three dwelling units per acre and a maximum of five and a half. The purpose of the R5 zone district is to provide for medium-density detached and attached dwellings in multifamily in areas where large lot development is discouraged and adequate public facilities and services are available. In addition to the R5 request, an R4 or CSR, which is Community Services and Recreation, zone district would also implement the comprehensive plan. So here we see the subject property as shown through the city's pictometry, so you can kind of see where it falls within the surrounding areas a little closer. In reviewing a request for a zone of annexation, the staff looks at five criteria that are outlined in Section 21.02.140 subsection A of the zoning and development code. A request must meet one or more of the rezone criteria identified on this slide. Staff has found that three of the five criteria have been met. When a property annexes into the city, the assumptions and facts used to assign county zoning are no longer valid. County zoning is not carried forward into the city. By Colorado statute, municipal zoning must be assigned to the property within 90 days of the effective date of annexation. When assigning zoning within city limits, the premise and findings must be based on the evaluation of the 2020 comprehensive plan, along with the availability of city infrastructure and services. While there has been some development in the area, it is still largely low-density and agricultural in nature. There have been no significant changes to the character of condition of the area that would meet criterion two. The property does have access to water and sewer services, both of which are available in Green Apple Drive, with water services also being available in 23 and a half Road. The city is looking to establish a new fire station in this area. At the time, response to service calls are estimated to be six to eight minutes. However, the property is located in approximately the same distance from three stations, which does increase service potential. While there is little or no R5 zoning north of I-70, the same can be said about properties that have been annexed into the city, so it's necessary to look at a wider community when determining if there's an inadequate supply of suitably designated land. The R5 zoning district is prevalent, particularly along G Road, so this criterion has not been met. And then finally, the community or area derives benefits because the requested zone district provides housing within a range of density that has been defined as urban in the comprehensive plan and is consistent with the needs of the community. In addition to the review criteria, a request for rezone is analyzed on how it implements the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan focuses on managing new growth, both by ensuring compatibility and respecting the roots of the city and through maximization of existing infrastructure. The subject property aligns with these goals by maintaining a low-density environment that complements the rural nature of the county and building onto an existing infrastructure system. Additional discussion of how this request implements the comprehensive plan goals on this slide and how it meets the review criteria for a zone of annexation can be found in the written staff report. In conclusion... Sorry about that. In conclusion, the requests, the following findings of fact have been made regarding the Apple Glen West zone of annexation. In accordance with Section 21.02.140 subsection A of the zoning and development code, the application meets one or more of the rezone criteria. And in accordance with Section 21.02.160 subsection F of the zoning and development code, the application is consistent with the adopted 2021 Grand Junction comprehensive plan. So staff recommends approval, and I am here for questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions for the staff at this time from the commission? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I will open the public hearing up to public comment. Please direct questions to the commission, not the applicant or staff. If testimony is duplicative or repetitious of what has already been presented, please note in your comments agreement or disagreement with the preceding testimony. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please note that the planning commission may not directly respond to your questions that you posed, but that they have heard your question and may choose after public comment to ask the applicant or staff to address specific questions. Looks like we have a member of the public who is ready to give a comment. Sir, can you please identify yourself and then go ahead and proceed with your comments?
I guess I'm ready. I'm Dick Pennington. I live at 780 23 and 710th Road. I've lived there forever. I have approximately 40 acres there. I'm well aware of what's going on with the school. See it every day. There's about 40 cars parked on H Road. It's terrible. They haven't got room for parking. They need to park, and they need to make a new parking deal and back the school, which is the same area that Bray and company is trying to change the zoning. And the way I understand it is, I don't know for sure, but I understand that he's got a contract on it from the school district. My feeling is the kids are so, it's so dangerous there for the kids, you can't believe it. And the people, their parents, that's letting kids out on H Road. We don't need any more houses there. We don't need the increase in zoning to increase the amount of people that'll be there. And the deal is, it's so dangerous now for the kids, you won't believe it unless you live there like I do. I... And see them every day, see this fact every day. This should be denied. It should be denied. The school district needs to cancel their contract. That they can do that. I've been in the building business a long time in the past, but their contract should be canceled from the school district for sure. And they can figure out a way to do it legally or however you want it. If Bray was nice, he would just cancel it and let it be safer for the kids and the public. And anyway, the... I'm very against it to help protect the kids and the public. I see it every day. They run over dogs, they run over... The next thing you're going to do is run over a kid. And I'm not kidding you. It's terrible. It's the worst I've ever seen. So I'm sure that you need, his contract needs to be canceled and don't change the zoning. If you change the zoning, it's just going to make it a lot more terrible for the kids and the problem that we already have. And anyway, I hope you consider the kids and the safety over rezoning this or selling it to him. So anyway, I hope you do that. I can't say much more except just do it. And you'll do it for the protection of the kids and their family.
Thank you for your comments.
Do you have any questions?
Not at this time. Is there anybody else that would like to give comments?
Hi, I'm Nancy Miller. I'm a long-term Appleton resident. I live right across the street from the school, so I certainly understand what Mr. Pennington was talking about. It's a pretty dangerous place. Appleton is trying to develop at a moderate rate, and that is somewhat difficult, especially when subdivisions want to come in with the largest number of possibles to build in. Apple Glen was a significant amount of people put into the Appleton central area where the school is, and it's incredibly busy there. And the addition of this particular property is, this particular property is surrounded by older, long-term, larger properties that have been in the Appleton area along 23 and a half Road and the subdivision that goes on, I think, Appleton Road. That's a subdivision that also borders this property, and those are large properties as well. And my comment is that this density is not a reasonable fit. I'm not saying that it's not a fit at all or whatever, but it's not a reasonable fit. It's not a reasonable step up in filling up the Appleton area. It's like taking just a whole bunch of them and dumping them in there. And, you know, I would like to recommend that the growth be more moderate, and, you know, not that density, but a little bit less would be great. And I believe that's the end of my comments.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to give a comment?
My name is Dan Miller. Like my wife said, if we live across the street from Appleton School, today was the last day of school. The cars parked on H Road, that's an ongoing situation, which has increased as three separate subdivisions have been developed. Very few kids right now walk along H Road. There's one part of a sidewalk on H Road. The cars on H Road are interspersed with heavy equipment, trucks, and an additional, all the additional number of vehicles from all the new subdivisions around have made driving around that area a little more difficult. At one point, at 24 and H Road, I watched three cars, two of which did not stop at the stop sign, one did. It was me being there for just a short time, but I noticed that having high density, living in a rural situation, people take their city driving as a matter of fact, and the effects on the surrounding territory has been enough so that I believe the planning commission stopped a high-density living at 24 and a half Road at H Road, somewhere near there. And I see this subdivision having two accesses at 23 and a half and Apple Glen, which is just going to add another, what, 40 vehicles per day into that area. I know that school's going to be out for two or three months, but each year I've watched the increase in traffic and the increase of semi-trucks and the fact that there is no other infrastructure in place for pedestrians. And one last thing, if Appleton is a village center, we have a distillery and assisted living, but that is it. We... All the traffic has to move through and around this area in order to go get groceries, go to work, go elsewhere. As you fill up an area outside of, right on the edges of Grand Junction, first, you're missing all the other places that are down, that can use high-density living. It would seem that having a high-density area in this part of Grand Junction, we're making it more difficult for people who are trying to live out there. So...
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public? I see one heading up.
My name's Robert McFarlane, and I am definitely opposed to this zoning going to five. I've seen the plans, and it states they intend to build 27 residents. You don't need to go to the R5 for that many. Kind of skipped a couple steps there. Not sure why you would even go after that. I guess I did question you guys. On 23 and a half Road, we have approximately 36 vehicles daily that go up and down there. That's the residents. Those are the guys in the landscaping business. You're going to add about 54 cars coming down our road, our dirt road, our county road. Now, I presented the county planners, and they have no intentions of ever paving our road. It's going to remain a gravel road. You guys are the planning committee. There needs to be a plan if you're going to dump that much traffic onto that gravel road. It's already painted, but... Anyway, there's plenty more to be said there, but that's about the gist of it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to give comment at this time? Seeing none in-house, is there anybody online?
Yeah, we do have two public comments. Again, Jacob Kaplan, planning technician. I'm going to read the first one, and then the other one has requested to speak, so... So the first being from Katie Bassinger. She says, can I rephrase my question to read? My question for the commissioner is, why are we not being consistent with the zoning in the Appleton area? The existing Apple Glen subdivision is zoned R4. The Silver Spur subdivision down the road at H Road and 23 and a half is also only zoned R4 for the single-family homes in that subdivision. I would like to voice my... for the single-family homes in that subdivision. I would like to voice my rejection for Apple Glen West subdivision to be zoned R5. Um, and then the other comment is Hal Cook. Hal, I'm gonna unmute you on our side, so just unmute yourself and then you'll have three minutes to speak, so. Um, we can't hear you. Are you, are you talking? Ah, yes, you're coming through computer audio. Sorry, give me one moment. Apologies for the technical difficulties. Hal, could you give it another go? I suppose. Try one more time. Yeah, try it. Well, this is excruciatingly painful. Um, apologies. Um, Hal? If you wouldn't mind just typing your question, we can come back to you. I apologize for whatever reason our audio's not working on our side, so if you would, if you wouldn't mind typing your question, I can read it out. Okay. Uh, so it looks like Hal's question is, um, the R5 designation of zoning has not been presented in the past meetings. This is the first time that it's been discussed with no plans for the review versus the R5 that was in sub 2022553. There needs to be a, that's William Story. Um, we do also have a comment by William Story. He says, Ute Waters bring water up 23 and a half road. No water is available in current subdivision. There needs to be a traffic study for 23 and a half road north of H. I believe that is all the public comments.
Thank you. Um, last chance, any other comments from the public? Sure, go ahead.
One of the requirements that is claimed to have been met is, um, this is beneficial to people. Well, this is Mason County's school property. Selling it or profit might benefit them. City of Grand Junction might benefit, you know? How many dollars are you guys gonna bring in from the added, you know, what kind of revenue are you looking at? Um, developer's gonna make money. What about the residents who live there now? Live on 23 and a half road? How's it gonna benefit us?
Thank you. At this time, I, I think we've, we've, everybody's had a chance to speak. I think we'll let the applicant, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public, um, comments section and allow the applicant to respond to what he's heard. I'm, I'm gonna let the applicant respond to the questions that you all have, have raised. Mr. Gier?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first thing that I would like to speak to is, uh, we did have a second neighborhood meeting in the pivot from R4 to R5 for the annexation and rezon. So we did inform the public and have a neighborhood meeting and in accordance with all the rules and processes. Um, in regards to traffic, um, we've had initial traffic investigations done. It's not required at this point in time, uh, but we've had some initial traffic investigations done that have shown that the, um, existing access is allowable, um, by code. I'll speak specifically to 23 and a half road. The existing access on H Road, uh, we do not need the 23 and a half road access because the existing access on H Road can service up to 99 lots per staff and fire department, um, requirements, current requirements with the potential for a second access. So 23 and a half road's really our potential second access. But because of, uh, fires, interpretation, and SAF, they prefer that we actually connect that access just to provide a little bit better emergency access because we're so close there. We don't have the frontage the whole way. Um, therefore we just have the, only the requirement to connect at that location. Um, this is a very common situation in a lot of subdivisions throughout, throughout the city. River Trail has one single access point currently with over 100 units. That's not per code, but it was allowed. Seminole Mesa has 80 units plus with, uh, one and a half access points, one that goes through the cemetery that doesn't qualify as a public road. Uh, Northridge has well over 100 lots off First Street with one access point. Uh, and then the, um, we're gonna be in the 90-ish units range depending on how the development shakes out, and we only need that one access point. So 23 and a half road's not preferred to be connected by us, but, but per staff, we are connecting it. Um, the county is accepting that they will maintain the road, provide man chloride and dust control. Uh, we've had meetings that, that will be assured for that. Then I'll speak even more to the comment on, um, existing street capacity and pedestrian improvements. Growth is already here. We're in the urban zone district and we have, uh, in a previous council and planning commission forced an R8 zoning just 1,300 feet to the east of this, of the Silver Spur subdivision. Higher density, but they forced it because that's what the future land use said. So we have traffic, we have issues. The more development you get, the more traffic impact fees you get, and those traffic impact fees will be applied directly to collector road upgrades on H Road first and eventually 23 and a half road. If 23 and a half road properties to the east develop, when they develop, there'll probably be half-street improvements. It'll be paved, it will start the, and the developers get credit for that. But the development is here, it's coming. We have traffic issues, and the only way to address this is to allow future growth, to get more impact fees for the city to build these collector roads. And I would only speak on how the school drop-off issue is a very common issue throughout the entire, uh, county since the reduction of bus service. Um, it's a, it's a common issue everywhere. School districts deal with it. They use traffic control options. It's just something that is not relevant to the conversation today because it has nothing to do with development or future density. It's an existing problem caused by a lack of transportation. If anything, additional students that are, um, generated from any of, of our development have the ability to actually walk to school due to proximity. Um, and again, more development will bring pedestrian improvements along H Road and make everything more safe in the long, in the long haul. So, um, I'll let, uh, our other member of the team speak to R4 versus R5.
Uh, good evening, Planning Commission. So, again, um, I spoke to you earlier, but uh, my name is Kevin Bray. I'm not Brian Bray. I'll refer to him as Mr. Bray. Um, but I am a part of his team on this development. So, um, yeah, on the, on the R, R4 versus R5, it's, you know, I, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say something that I heard voiced by a, a commissioner in, in a past meeting. Uh, and it was that density is actually a form of land conservation. If we were to develop, if we were to provide housing at a one per four, one per five acre or a one per one acre density, we would run out of land almost immediately. So, we need density in order to preserve some of these areas that where people do want that lower density. And this area has not been designated that through, through a much longer process, which was a comprehensive plan, which happened over, um, it was a years-long process that, that involved the community, uh, in many, many instances. So, uh, why the, why the R5 versus the R4? Well, costs of development have gone up substantially, and we all know that affordability is an issue. Um, it's probably the number one issue in this community and it seemingly is the number one issue in almost every community across the nation. It's probably, um, the word of the year in terms of, of what, um, communities are struggling with and it's affordable housing. And we can't have that without, uh, supply of housing. Uh, another item that I think is, is noteworthy is, uh, you know, I was talking about the benefits to the, to the neighborhood of the development, and that's one of the criteria. Well, uh, currently, uh, you have streets that are stubbed and, and that is, um, that should give the indicator to anybody that there's going to be future development. Uh, but the reason that those streets are stubbed is for safety and connectivity so that emergency services, if for some reason an entrance is blocked, uh, then there in the future would be another entrance. And currently, the existing access point, there are, there are stub streets, but there is no second access and the development of this property would actually provide a second access. Uh, somebody talked about water looping. Uh, it's most likely through the subdivision process that that water line will actually be required to be looped. Um, so we'll again have upgraded, um, water facilities, and that doesn't come without a cost. So, part of, um, having more lots is there, it does spread the costs out and there is a margin. There is a risk margin that, uh, you know, that development is not, does not come without a lot of risk. And you need to have a, a number of lots in order to spread those, um, those challenges that we have with development out. So, um, I would just also say that I, I really appreciate what all the neighbors' comments are, and I think that they're very, they're valid concerns. They're real and they're valid concerns. Traffic and, uh, what's going on with the, the parking at the school and, and regardless of, uh, what the rules and regulations are, I, I respect those concerns. And as a developer, I do everything that I can, and I know that Mr. Bray would do the same, to reasonably accommodate those concerns. Um, but those are not, uh, those are not objectionable criteria for the purposes of this code. And I wanna thank the staff for doing a fantastic job and a very thorough report. And I know that Mr. Bray has worked with them diligently through this process in order to, um, in order to propose a zoning that has staff support and that meets the criteria as Ms. Galhouse pointed out with the comprehensive plan and also meets the criteria that's laid out for rezon. Um, so I wanna thank, uh, staff for the report and I wanna thank you commissioners for, uh, considering this request tonight. And of course, answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Kevin Bray, uh, for speaking on Mr. Bray's behalf there. We appreciate that. Um, are there any questions for the applicant from the commission at this time? Or the staff?
Commissioner, if I, if I may, um, just clarify some of the comments we've received online since it didn't seem like they had enough time to type. I don't know if that's a possibility.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Um, so a point of fact for Hal Cook, I think I believe, I stated I, uh, no plans for review versus the R5 that was in sub 2022553. It was R4 was the, in the previous plan, not the R5. Um, Mr. William Story wanted to ask, um, what is the stormwater program and how will irrigation water be handled on the site? Um, Katie Bassinger, Bassinger, um, she stated, uh, she's had at both neighborhood meetings. During the second neighborhood meeting, there was significant neighborhood voice opposing the R5 zoning. Then we continue to oppose it now. Uh, Brooke Sorensen said, are there subdivision, are these subdivisions you speak of next to the school in, uh, response to Mr. Gier's, uh, comment about, um, Seminole Estates? Um, and she said, we can hardly get out of our subdivision some days because parents' vehicles are parked on both sides of the roads. And then John Sorensen, I would like to say that today in many days is a one-way into Apple Glen subdivision. Dumping traffic into 23 and a half road will cause more problems to 23 and a half in our subdivision. What will happen if they bring dirt and traffic into our subdivision? Who will be responsible to our subdivision wastewater in 23 and a half road? Um, and he's wondering if they will pave the road. And I believe that's all. So, and I apologize to all of our virtual attendees for the lack of ability to communicate on your own behalf. Um, I hope I did justice.
No worries. You're doing the best you can there. Um, would the applicant like to respond to any of the additional comment that they've heard?
Sure. Uh, I can respond a little bit to 23 and a half road. So, um, as Mr. Gier pointed out, that, that is a connection that's required. Um, it's not a connection that, that, um, that we need in terms of having ample, you know, there's, 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 um, plenty of volume on the existing residential road through the, through the existing subdivision to the east of this parcel of land. Uh, on 23 and a half road, that's a future collector. Uh, it's designated a future collector on the city's comprehensive plan, on their traffic circulation plan. And as such, it receives impact fees from development. So, not just this property, but other properties in the area. And as, as you've all looked at the property, there is, um, quite, quite a bit of, um, developable vacant land that's to the west of 23 and a half road. So, not just from this subdivision and also from the existing subdivision that would have paid their impact fees that were due at the time that was developed, but from all those other subdivisions that can go to those collector roads. Um, but there's also, uh, an impediment to that is that the, those existing owners on the road have not, um, they have not developed. And when you develop, as the, as will be required of this application, the adequate right-of-way needs to be granted to the city in order to upgrade that road. And so, that's a process that happens over time as those other properties become annexed into the city. And at this time, I don't think that they have that linked together. So, uh, even though the city is receiving a fair amount of impact fees, I don't think that they have the jurisdiction at this point to improve 23 and a half road. But as those owners opt in and annex their properties, the city would be able to, to consider spending funds and upgrading 23 and a half road, and, and I see that as an eventuality.
Thank you. Mr. Gier, do you have comments as well?
I have. I'm here with River City. Um, I can speak, uh, first off to stormwater. Um, the site is not connected to any significant storm drain system. It has a historical drainage point. Uh, therefore, this development will end up taking up more than the usual space for a stormwater pond to collect, uh, much larger volume and store it on site. It's basically a, a flood control mechanism. Then they'll have a small pump system that will pump out at a very low rate. So stormwater will actually be, um, reduction of overall existing peak flows. The 100-year storm is a criteria that we have to be at or below if we have a place to discharge. Since we don't, we'll be discharging it probably a factor of five less than, than the actual 100-year storm. So it'll be a reduction of, of 100-year storm, uh, runoff. Irrigation, um, I do a lot of irrigation engineering in my Irrigation, I do a lot of irrigation engineering in my, in my career, and one of the things that's always tricky about an irrigation system like this is it would be very difficult for us to add shares to that system because it hasn't been historically irrigated and not adversely affect the other users on the system. Therefore, we are taking the smallest amount of shares possible just for the common areas, and these, these lots will not have irrigation water available because it's not, has been historically available, and it would be very, it'd be impossible for us to provide ourselves water without actually upgrading a massive irrigation system and working well with all the neighbors that have to agree to something like that according, according to collateral law and statutes. So irrigation, we're gonna not affect anybody in the, anybody else's irrigation in the system. In regards to the question about Simran Mesa, Simran Mesa is a similar distance, I don't have the exact measurement from Dos Rio School, so a large development going in, it's being constructed right now at an overloaded parking lot because of the lack of, of transportation and buses at, at any school in the district. So those are the three questions I have addressed.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission, for staff or applicant, before we?
I have a few questions for staff, I just kinda wanna, wanna confirm. What is the, the minimum density for R five?
The minimum is three units per acre.
And the maximum is five?
Five and a half.
Five and a half, okay. This first step is annexation and zoning, and then any development that happens after that would go through a, a complete development process, right?
That's correct, it goes through subdivision review.
At that time of that process, or does the code and the, and does that process require the application of, of science, the application of engineering, the application of jurisdictional review agencies to contemplate traffic? And if traffic is proven to exceed the capacity, will the density or the design of the, of this property be impacted during that process by what those findings come to bear?
Yes, it does. So it is reviewed by the city development engineers, and in this case, because 23 and a half is a county road, it's also reviewed by the county engineers. They look at the traffic that is projected from the site, determine if additional studies are warranted, and then from those studies will determine if additional improvements to the roadway system are required.
Does the, the scrutiny of the process that we just discussed here for traffic, does that also apply to stormwater management?
It does.
Does that also apply to irrigation?
It does.
Okay, so we, we have a, we have a process that if we, if we have a zoning request that is in compliance with the recently approved Comp 2020 plan, in my opinion, seems to meet planning intentions of, of putting density and intensity close to existing infrastructure such as schools, traffic, multimodal, and the works. The ensuing process will then flesh out through design to what capacities and to what extent that density may or may not be achieved, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for either the staff or the applicant?
So just for kind of a, maybe a point of clarification, along with Commissioner Ellers' question, you essentially have on Spur Crossway, you have 10 lots that are zoned R eight, and then the surrounding lots are zoned R four, as well as Apple Glen Drive, and then the, the streets that branch off of that are zoned R four. Would I be making an assumption that a developer may request maybe a higher zoned at R five just to accommodate their, their density when it comes to maybe an 8,000 to 10,000 square foot lot, and then, you know, maybe roadway, holding ponds, so on and so forth? So just because they're asking for a little higher density, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna, they're gonna get it, just due to the fact that there's infrastructure as well as holding, holding ponds and so on and so forth. So I just, I, I asked the question as far as a, an assumption. I guess I, my question is, would I be making the proper assumption? Just, and I ask this because people are asked in the question of why R five over R four.
Yes, so those are common reasons why developers do request the higher density. I do want to just counter that, but there's not necessarily something saying they can't meet the density, so, but in a lot of cases, they can't because of those infrastructure requirements. And just to clarify something you said, it's actually more than 10 lots that are R eight. It's, I didn't count them all, but it's the Cross, Silver, Spur Crossway, Silver Cross Ave, and then the top part of Concho Court are all R eight.
Okay, yeah, I, sorry about that, I just clicked on, I think, the first 10, and then, and then I stopped, so I just used those first 10 as, as a point of reference.
Are there other questions for the staff or the applicant at this time? Seeing none at this time, we will close the public hearing and turn to Planning Commission for additional discussion, deliberation, and/or a motion. Who would like to start us off?
I would say a couple things, just to acknowledge the people online and the, and the people from the community. I mean, you definitely have been heard, the intersection at 24 and H, you know, they recently put in a four-way, didn't they? Because there's so many accidents there. So the people are acknowledging that the traffic's getting worse there, and, you know, my children went there, and I know what you're talking about with people parking on H road, and, and the school has not opted to use that big space behind the building to alleviate the drop-off problems, and then you've got the road, nobody's gonna let their kids walk that road, no matter how many houses they put in near there unless they, you know, arrange for walkways directly to the back of the property of the school, no one's gonna let their kids walk, so everybody is gonna drive their kids even if they're from that new subdivision. So it's, it's like the safe walkways are not keeping up with, with our need to build housing, but as, as was mentioned, I, you know, I'm not seeing a lot of objectionable criteria here. And, and I really, I really feel for you because that's a, it is, it's every, every subdivision that goes in near a school, we have the same conversation. And those schools weren't built to have that many cars come in and out of them, not even close. You know, that old section, the old haunted section of the Appleton School, you know, that's all it was when it started, and now it's this much bigger school, and we're having growth, and it's just not ideal the way things are set up. And hopefully the school will, school district might do something with some of the drop-off, and hopefully somebody will do a little bit more sidewalk, a little bit more safe pedestrian travel. I mean, I wouldn't ride my bike down there to school, if I went there, I wouldn't let my kids walk to school.
Are there any other comments that commissioners would like to make before we entertain a Seeing none, does anybody want to entertain a motion?
I can make a motion. Mr. Chairman, on the zone of annexation request for the property located north of Appleton Elementary, west of Green Apple Drive, and east of 23 and a half road, file, C file number ANX 2022287, I move that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council with the findings of facts as listed in the staff report.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
Is there any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six to zero. That concludes our agenda. Is there any other business to be brought before the commission this evening before we adjourn?
No, there's none.
Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Summit.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.